Welcome to our work session. We in preparation for our first meeting in June, which is going to be June the first, Tuesday. And just before I get started, one of the things I wanted to announce is that we will be open for absentee voting at the city clerk's office tomorrow morning from eight to 12. And we also will have trash pickup on Tuesday. It will be citywide, so in, uh, we will not have trash pickup on Monday, but in honor of the Memorial Day holiday, but we will do citywide trash pickup on Tuesday. So having said that, I will take us to business because we have a couple of things that we we are wanting to do. We're very fortunate to have Senator Bart Williams here with us, who's going to give us a legislative update, but I have kind of reversed the order because I'm gonna let Paige give her a quick little update on what's what's coming forward this coming year that the partnership is doing downtown. And then we will let Senator Williams give us a little legislative update and we'll probably have some questions for him. So you can sit through that, right? So you can come down and party with us when we have parties in the downtown?
With pleasure.
All right, Paige, go ahead and congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you all very much for having me this morning. I will be very brief. I know everybody's getting ready for the holiday weekend. So yeah, I'm the new Main Street Director, really honored and excited to have the title. We just received our Main Street America reaccreditation this week, so that's exciting. I just wanted to go over a few brief things from the Main Street Board and then, of course, get into our upcoming events for the remainder of the year and look at 2022 as a whole. So this is our Main Street district map. I think, you know, sometimes a lot of people just think Main Street organization and they think, you know, our main blocks are Main Street, but we actually encompass Compton District, Russell Street, and some of Highway 102, so that's especially exciting, um, in the time that we're in now. There's just so much momentum. Our 2021 Board of Directors are available here. David's in the room, so thank you so much. But this is our board. Current President is Hagan Walker and Vice President is Rosa Lumumba. Our fiscal year begins October 1st, so the new example take transition then. But this is our 14-member board right here. We have about 65 Main Street Board businesses, so that kind of encompasses our whole, I guess, part of the partnership, so 65 member businesses. So we model our board meetings after the Main Street approach, and it's pretty much just four sections and committees, so that goes with economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion. So again, I'm being very quick, so y'all stop me if you have any questions, but...
And this will be available?
Yes, yes. Y'all have copies and everything, so if you have any questions, I'll stop you there. But just some things that Economic Vitality is working on, and this is the committee that tries to get more people downtown, create new business and entrepreneurship activities. So I use the Rex Peter picture because if you haven't tried Dolce, please do, it's very good. Design, we just put the banners up, so I hope you guys like them and have noticed them. I'm seeing some headlines, thank you very much. Organization, the partnership in October is in the process of switching over to Tier J, so that committee right now is working on new membership structure for Main Street as well. And then, of course, promotions is our events, so. This summer, the community market has been running every Saturday since April 17th, and will continue our summer season until Saturday, July 31st. So I believe tomorrow's market will have live music, so that's exciting. Wile E. Bigger, but we're on market number seven, and so we'll go through the end of July. This Thursday night next week, we're gonna have a new event, Sales and Sales, so that's really exciting. We'll have originals and tango, and I hope everybody will come out for that. But just think unwind, but craft beer. And then we plan on having another unwind in July, Friday, July 23rd, and we'll theme that with the Christmas in July thing, like we typically do. And then for the fall, I'm so excited about fall. It's gonna be jam-packed, I think. Starville is actually the host community for the Tri-State Main Street Conference. So we will have 300 directors from Louisiana, Arkansas, and Mississippi in town for Destination Downtown the third week of September. The following week, we plan on having Night Market where we play here against LSU, so that Friday night. Downtown Pumpkin Plaza will be homecoming week, Thursday, October 28th. And then Unwind Downtown will be October 15th. So those are just some things that we have coming up in the fall along with many other things. And I put a whole list for the whole year of everything the partnership has going on. So you can already, the first page is already completed, but we're thinking midway through page two if you want to look at that calendar, but it's kind of all laid out there. I don't see any questions, Ryan.
Well, Christmas Parade, obviously.
Yes, onto holiday.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had a separate slide for that, I apologize.
You're fine, you're fine. Christmas and Starville, the Christmas Parade will be for the last Monday in November, so it's Monday, November 29th this year. Obviously, everyone missed that in 2020, but our first broadcast was very well done. So we'll have the Christmas Parade and Holiday bizarre. So this year is the 49th Annual Holiday bizarre. It's crazy that it's been that long, but we also will be announcing that we'll tie in Festival of Trees with that this year, too. So that's a really, really great community event where businesses can decorate their own Christmas trees, and we have to get a lot of chamber businesses involved. And then our final last event of the year will be our conclusion of our Farmers Market, so that'll be the Holly Jolly Market. It was super successful last year. Santa Claus is there, and so we had a great time. But that kind of rounds out 2021. Does he not have any questions about? I feel like I just gave a load of information to y'all.
Are we looking at, talk, let me talk about the Christmas lights?
Christmas lights, yes. So on our committees that we have for Main Street, I'll go back to that page, some things that different organizations are working on. Designs next step is definitely Christmas decorations. So we hope to have some things ordered by July, so y'all will see now, because now is the time to purchase, but yes. Design, that's their focus right now. I've said, obviously, organization is a new due structure. And then promotion on this last page, we have 2022 events. I don't know why July is way down there, sorry about that. But ideally, we'd like to have one large Main Street event every month next year, so. We had that ready to go for 2020, but obviously, y'all know for the pandemic, we weren't able to do anything, but this is kind of what we're thinking about for our schedule. So hopefully, if all goes well by October of this year, we'll have 2022 planned out to kind of match this schedule.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Alderman Carver?
No, I just didn't realize how much information, how much I do until you see it in this format, but this is great for people to say, oh, there's nothing going on in town. There's always something going on in town.
There is always something going on.
I think there's about 169 or 68 events on that page, I think, y'all. So that also includes, you know, we are really gonna pump up Dog Talk Downtown every Thursday night during football season. I think that will be so much fun. There's a lot of potential with that event, so we're really, really excited about that. But obviously, the goal is to get people downtown, get people shopping and dining in our stores, and obviously, to make our, you know, improve the community and the district.
And we want to, we want to light up, we want to use the lights on Lafayette, we want to particularly dress up. Our Christmas this past year was just sad, and we need to, we need to step it up.
Blow it up.
Yeah, we do. So Alderman Siskronk, any questions?
Yes, Compton District Arts Festival, that's one I get questions about, and I know y'all have plans for this year and probably next year.
Yes, October 2nd or 3rd, I believe.
Second, I believe.
Yes, the 2nd. That will be, that will be here before we know it, so.
Is that a football weekend?
It is an off weekend. Yes, ma'am.
As is Bulldog Bash, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah, Bulldog Bash is scheduled for the fall for when we're playing Memphis, so, but we haven't really gotten, it hasn't gotten into the special event. That's supposed to come in next week, so we'll get the details then, but right now, the planning is for an off weekend so that we aren't just inundated and overloaded beyond our capacity.
So October this year for the Arts Festival, back to spring next year?
I am not sure about the schedule for next year, but we're here to support. Yes, I think it's great any time of year, so. But yeah, I'm very excited to see, I'm very excited to see us fill those weekend, weekend weekends, so it's gonna be really great for us.
Alderman Little, anything?
Thank you for that, Paige.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman.
What is it, Tri-State, uh, Main Street, Gomsky?
The week of Bulldog Bash, September 15th through 17th. And then that weekend is also the Women's State Tennis Tournament will be in town.
Yeah, that's gonna be rocking and rolling. In fact, we've, we've got to work with the police, yeah, we discussed it yesterday with the police department so that we can pace ourselves for all the activities associated with it.
How many Main Street Directors do you expect?
I believe 200 to 300, and I think we're gonna see a lot because of, you know, everybody's ready to travel. We were supposed to help host this conference last year, but we're luckily able to do it this year, so.
Mississippi, Alabama, Louisiana?
Yes, sir. And we probably won't have this opportunity again for another, you know, several years, so it's really exciting. But yeah, it's a lot all at once, but we can definitely do it. Thank you for ready.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay. All righty, if there's nothing else, then thank you so much for coming.
Thank you all.
We'll look forward to having activities downtown.
Thank y'all very much, and yeah, hope to see you at all our awesome events.
Okay. And Senator Williams, we are really appreciative that you have joined us, and I'm sure there'll be questions, but whatever you'd like to share with us from a legislative standpoint and as a past and a go-forward.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate you having me here. I'd like to say, I think what I said last time I said, it's an honor to serve. Thanks for hiring me, I appreciate it. Hope I can do a job as adequate before we're done. But to reiterate what Alderman Carver said, Paige, y'all, what you do is amazing piece of work. People just don't realize, I think everybody here does, what goes in the background to pull off what we have here in Starville. It's truly amazing, and it's, it's a village, you know, to pull it all off. So thanks for all that y'all do, being part of the partnership. I see some of that firsthand, so it's, it's truly amazing. Couple of weeks ago, ten of the governors in town, I think most of the people saw him, so I'm not gonna try to pre niche what he said, but he was emphasizing the rescue money and trying to come up with a collaboration to hopefully get a matching grant there from the legislature as these monies become available. As one of your two senators here in Starville, whatever role I can help play, depending upon how you want to go with that, I want to do that, because the more intimate I am with whatever asks may be there, the more ability I may have at procuring those funds at the state level. That's one of the jobs that I've got. So I want to make sure, you know, y'all just educate me on what it is, what your passions are, desires are, what mine are, and what I'll go to Jackson and try to do from a fiscal perspective as it relates to that. And Q and A in a minute, if you've got any questions specifically to that, I've been with him another time or two, and kind of see what his priority is. That is a legislative choice, so there's 174 of us that will make that choice, but I think it makes good sense, it makes good fiscal sense if we move in that direction. In this last session, I did what I said, I went to learn, tried to keep my mouth shut and learn, which I started learning, there's a lot to learn, but it was, I think holistically the session was successful. More could have been done, but I think that's eternal. But we're here some funding, initial funding, I'm gonna say, for the road project. There were two asks that we had, one we didn't get funded to library, the other, we did get some funding, and there again, as we go forward, let me know what your priorities are, and I'll go down there and hopefully next year have more of an effect. I think that Rob worked very hard on working on that over the last session, so as I'm becoming more acclimated to things down there, we'll, we'll do our best to do, whatever funding, you know, we can get from the city, we will. In working with people across the state, seeing a lot more of this state, let me just say, Starville is special. Of this state, we've got a great state, I'm a big fan of our state all over it, but we've got some special things, special chemistry, special unity here, and, because I've seen other areas, we're not the only place, but we're one of few places. Looking at census numbers this morning, Actibah County is projected to be of about 4,600 people. Every adjacent county is down, so that's a testament to you guys of what's happening here and the resources and assets that we have here that are there. One other thing from a legislative perspective that's going to be on the radars is tax reform. That's a thing that, that was introduced at 11 o'clock, at about 11:03, this thing starts going crazy. I understood what it was to be an elected official at that point. A lot of concerns about it, but I think you're gonna see both sides of leadership anyway, looking at that as a priority is very important. There's a lot of things going on there, but trying to produce a good piece of legislation, I hope, will be the objective of the people in charge there. Tax reform is good, tax transference, in my opinion, is not, and I think that's what the original bill was looking at. So as that thing goes forward, I got input, I want input, what the people wants, what we want to do down there. And somebody asked me midway how it was going in Jackson, and I said, it was going great till it got political.
Till it got what?
Till it got political. And again, the naivety of a freshman, and maybe words I shouldn't say, but I just think that where we're trying to do good legislation or we're trying to serve agendas, I don't know the answer to that, I just know that we need to do what's best for the people. And if we can put our, and we did that a lot. We had a lot of legislation that we did that was good, that got out and that became law. I think that'll be very good things for the people, but that's a piece that's coming, so please stay in teams with what's going on. There'll be hearings starting before long. I plan on being involved in doing that. I've got a consensus, I think, of what's important and what's not, but there's a lot of things that can happen there, a lot of moving pieces and a lot of effects that can happen. One of the things, I intend to engage some of the analytical resources in our community to hope do projections and models and try to be as scientific as we can as do that, if that's one piece that we can insert. We have that ability here in Starville with Mississippi State, so hopefully we'll see that, and that'll help us maybe better predict where we're headed with tax reform if it happens. That's really it. If y'all got any questions to me about what went on, what's going on, and what you might want to see going on at the state level, please ask away.
Do you have any background, additional background besides what's been out in the paper on the medical marijuana issue and how that's going to be resolved, or if it's going to be resolved, or?
Senator Hop Bryant is the Chair of Public Health and Welfare, I think is the name of committee. They will be meeting next Thursday with one topic agenda, that topic. I spoke with Brad White, the Chief of Staff, the Governor, he's kind of my conduit there, and I just, enough constituents talked to me, and where I was at with it, I said, I feel that people need action, I think we need to act sooner than later on that. So I tried to reflect, the constituency that has talked to me about it, by that being said, call a special session, let's do something, the people voted on it, we need to fix it, or we need to do what the people have said. Consensus was, people are trying to put a framework together before we called into a special session. Without some degree of framework, we're just wasting taxpayers' money. So I've got deeper opinions on some things, but Hop would hold those. We're gonna see action, I think, just my opinion, we'll see a special session, probably. No one's told me that's coming, but I think, I think the people are trying, down there, the leadership is trying to put some kind of construct together to get the legislature back in session and do it.
Okay.
I personally think, you know, it was voted for on the ballot, the people spoken, it got thrown out on technicality, let's fix all those things that are wrong.
Okay.
That's what we kind of dovetailed into when I was going to ask, are they gonna look at the whole initiative process to just overhaul it? Because there's a good article, a couple days editorial in the paper about it, you know, a process to where, you know, if you want to change a law as opposed to changing the Constitution, you know, there ought to be two different avenues, and the whole process needs to be.
Conversations that I've had, me, the immediacy that we've got is we've got two issues. Right now, the people do not have a weight to circumvent legislate. We need to fix that. That's not the way this is supposed to be set up. Again, the naivety of a freshman, maybe I'm missing something, but that needs to be fixed. And we have an issue that's out there that was voted on that's kind of fresh on everyone's mind. We need to address with that. It's the will of the people, we need to do the will of people, in my opinion. Other conversations I've had with some, there is a legislative way to deal with, you know, we don't need to put it, we were, again, Bart talking, we were on a track, put everything in the Constitution.
That's really valid, initiative, codified section in the Constitution.
Well, we should codify it, we should not put it in the Constitution, because we're taking an industry, and we're gonna put it in the Constitution. Now we got precedent for lawsuits out everywhere. When industry's not in the Constitution, that's not fair.
But when you pass a valid initiative, it heads to the Congress, it becomes constitutional Constitution, right, unless it's such current.
Unless we fix it.
Unless.
With a legislative piece in it. Take the medical marijuana thing, one of the big concerns with it was, we put it in there as it is, if there's a tweak that's needed, we need to do something because of an oversight, it's a very complex thing. The only way to change it is change the Constitution. If it's codified and it's in statute, you can change it during the next session. It's a thing to do that, you know, it's, it's a balance. A lot of people say, well, legislators shouldn't have that control, a lot of people say it shouldn't be in Constitution. When you throw it in the Constitution, it just becomes very muddy, I think. Not, these things are very important, it should be. My personal opinion, when the people want something, the legislature should give it to them. Why are we circumventing the legislature and going to the Constitution? Because the legislature won't do what the people want, is my perspective. Medical marijuana is an issue that's been out there for five, it's a very...
They won't touch it.
Eighty-six percent or eighty-two percent of this county voting for it, seventy-six percent of my district. I have a mandate, the way I look at it. There are other districts that that's more of a complex conversation.
Statewide, seventy percent, what?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one percent. Seventy-one, seventy-two percent. Statewide it is, but it's, you know, it's, that's an issue, and then some things we're slow to move, and I don't mean that as an insult, it's just the reality of our culture and who we are, but same time as legislators, we're hired to do the people's will, and we should do the people's will, and some of that's difficult to do. You know, I say that after one session, I haven't been through the warfare. We said at 2:00 to get it out of the Senate, that a backup medical marijuana bill, and believe me, I saw how things worked with that, and it was done, it was a backup measure, it didn't get out of house, blah, 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 it's what it is, but that's, we're hired to do the job, and we need to do the job, and sometimes it's difficult to do, and we should.
Okay.
Am I answering those questions? Sorry.
Alderman Vaughn, yes.
When they get through tweeting and do all that, do that mean the citizens got to go back and revote again?
No, sir. Based upon the Bart's words, Constitution, based on Supreme Court, it was put on the ballot incorrectly, therefore the votes null and void. It comes back to the legislature, hopefully, to do what they need to do as the people's will. At that point, it will stay in the legislature under legislature, under statute, and it can be adjusted and amended, there is a...
And that was basically the result of the housekeeping issue, was it, because of District Five and different...
Constitution says five districts, we don't have five, we have four. It needs to be more generic, all districts with the percentages, it's an easy fix, I think.
Yeah, it is an easy fix, but it also impacts other elements that were passed, the voter ID.
We've been caught in similar situations.
Voter ID and eminent domain are two issues that went through ballot issues. I have been told, I have not verified this, that that has already been codified.
Okay.
So you, you've got two things, you've got the constitutional piece that's in there that we've been following, then if the legislature comes back and says, okay, yeah, we want to do that, we agree with it, the constitutional piece is now invalid and can be challenged, and based upon precedent just set overturned, what's codified and been put in statute since that referendum was passed is a different issue, so you got two things happening.
Okay.
And that's what should happen, anyway.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Mrs. Siskronk, Alderman Siskronk.
Always, Mrs. Howard's a question. Actually, what I wanted to talk about a little bit was the idea of tax reform, and we all have different understandings of what that means in the world. What I wanted to do was just offer, if you have some time.
Yes.
To talk about how this could potentially impact the city and cities throughout the state, because one of my concerns with the last-minute process that was happening last year was there was real potential to impact city revenues, one of those unintended consequences. And so I think the more educated you are about how it functions here, the better job you're gonna do in your role.
I completely agree, and I promise you, this is not the, y'all can take as much time as you want, that could be hours of conversation. I'm very, very concerned about where we were with it. In short, eliminating income tax is what the objective is. I understand the governor's in favor of that, but I don't know that he's in favor of offsetting the taxes, which is what, in my opinion, we had.
I'll bet you're gonna blow a big hole in states, right? If you don't, you'll blow a big hole in states general fund, and then, you know, lost money, mix-up gets cut, and I mean, that's just, you know, that's, that's a fact of life.
I'd be glad to, if we want to do a special thing to do that, and no time constraints is here, I'm glad to that, and I need to know, I need to know that, because the more, I'm, my numbers got, the more data I've got, the more I can go sell, and I'll do that.
Your home state did that a couple years ago, and by the fact, I see Mississippi modeling that, Tennessee on that. Difference, Tennessee, Mississippi, Tennessee got local sales tax in Kansas City's up there, so it doesn't affect, you know, what cities and counties, they got, they got a cap, but they can, they can set local sales tax rates up there, which drives their revenue at the local level.
So many factors.
And, and they did it on, they increased theirs on gasoline excise tax, and some of that's gonna filter back to municipalities and counties, for general, well, maybe for street stuff, but it's gonna end up backing us. So that, that's the reason, they, how they cut that haul, haul income tax up there?
Yes, sir.
And he was just on dividends and interest anyway, right?
I'm not sure the specifics.
But, but our system's a little bit different, so when we start doing it down here, it's, like Alderman Siskronk said, you know, it's about to blow a big hole in the revenue for us on grocery sales tax, goodness knows, and so that's something.
Yeah, devil will be in the details, and maybe there'll be, yeah, I would presume y'all will have preliminary discussions about how you're gonna go about that, is you planning this time around as opposed to just dropping it?
The Senate, Josh Harkins is President Finance, Chair of Finance, and he's gonna be holding hearings this summer. The Senate has an intention, and what I saw of it is have a very methodical approach, where you got, here's what we've got, have a lot of discussion on it, continue to do it, and reform that piece of work into a bill, hopefully, that the majority of the people can agree to.
And as those things are being considered, I assume that we'll be alerted to how we can feedback, give you feedback?
Yes, I will, I'm the conduit for us here, Senator Turner and myself are the conduit here, and I'm gonna be, yes, please.
Senator, one more thing, it doesn't so much affect us, but if, if the general sales tax is increased, state general sales tax is increased from seven, nine percent, that's gonna usurp, it's gonna end local cities, buildings, sick, you know, those local hospital, hospitality taxes like we have now.
We're gonna be twelve, thirteen percent.
Because, and there's, I think, I think 10% you...
When you hit 10, it's a psychological...
That's like a threshold, threshold right there. So I think it'll be hard for Y-Not and Y-Only or Add, but somebody along Interstate 55 that needs that money to be able to sell hospitality tax, once it goes nine and a half percent statewide.
Well, I think it also jeopardizes...
We gotta preach, that's all I can tell you, we gotta preach.
It jeopardizes our ability, because none of these are permanent that we have, well, our hotel, we do have a hotel that is permanent, but we've got to come back and, and ask for, ask for renewal each time, and our, we're actually due up, I think, next year to ask yet again, and if that kicks in, that simply cannot be the factor that makes that determination.
My hope is that piece of tax reform, nope, out, next, I mean, excuse me for being simplistic, but yes, the argument is if it's made, that's not gonna work.
Well, in, in neighboring states like Tennessee, like Alabama, the higher sales tax means that the local level, profit taxes are significantly, landlord taxes significantly lower. This ain't gonna affect landlord tax at the local level one bit. Our, our landlord, landlord tax rates are gonna stay the same, we're gonna be made whole, as Alderman Siskronk was talking about, by increasing the version of grocery taxes and stuff, as far as us being able to come back and say, okay, now we can lower property tax, which is a big issue, I can tell you personally, that's a big issue locally, but, so, that's the difference. In Tennessee, people talk about property taxes up there, but they're, they're, I don't know, in most municipalities, you take a business-to-business thing, they're fifteen, twenty percent lower up there on a hardware store in Tennessee versus Mississippi.
Yes.
And you get in Alabama, Arkansas, they have the two lowest landlord tax rates in the country. So we're, we're surrounded by states that have very low property taxes, or lower, significantly lower, and this is not gonna do anything to help cities on that side or in that particular issue.
And y'all are not the only municipality that has that feeling.
Absolutely.
Senator, we had a lot of that, so I think MML, y'all probably active in that, make sure your voice, obviously you got me as a voice and I'm going to go with you, do what you tell me, but through MML, those, every conduit that you've got to let, where the objections to whatever may happen, and hopefully we see a bill, a lot of things are definitely mitigated before an initial draft comes out. But through the, hopefully we've got a process. And this is where I understand time is needed. You can't do the greatest tax reform in the history of the state in a month or two, in my opinion. And, and these do's, and let's do it right. If we want to do it, let's do it right.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else?
I just want to say, Senator Willis, thank you for, for coming by today and giving everybody an update and for, for being a, a voice for the people in, in Jackson. That's something that I think is certainly appropriate and to, to keep folks here in, in the loop at, in leadership so they can, so they can give you their perspective as you move forward and as the city and the, the new board moves forward, I think will be really important. And I think you're, I think the things that you touched on today are probably, there's always the, the curve ball that comes, that's the, the other big thing that you're going to have to address, but those are clearly extremely important issues. And as the mayor said, I was looking at the, the renewal of that two percent, uh, sales taxes is going to be huge for the city of Starkville in the coming, coming year.
And that's something that, that, and, and obviously I don't take it for granted, the consensus there now is that's not a big issue, but there's a, a small minority that's, well, should they, should they, should they? All I can say is if my, if local and private, if you guys come to me with a resolution and want something, then that's it. That's my mandate from you guys. It's not what I think is what, you know, if you want that, because we had a lot of that happen, but it's a very good consensus today, but that's subject to change within elections. So just, that's, you're exactly right. And if you look forward to elections from now, the new composition in the houses and you've got thirteen percent in one municipality, it could be, it could be a harder sell.
Yes, sir. And, and again, I think you're certainly looking at the numbers and I appreciate that and, uh, you coming in knowing that where the, where Acton Hall County and the city of Starkville stands, um, I think it's, my, the outside view looking in seems this be that, uh, as the only state in our region that lost population in this last census.
Six thousand people.
That is going, that the opportunity is, well, let's, on paper, make it look like we've lowered taxes and we're going to increase, uh, to, to start drawing people. I, I would say I would question that methodology pretty, pretty strongly.
But simplistic, I look at our surrounding states, what's their population?
Correct.
What are their incomes? And we've got similar.
That's right.
Number of miles of roads.
Well, I say, though Tennessee, Arkansas, Alabama, I'll tell you, just take, I mean, Tennessee, Alabama, New, take Arkansas.
Close match.
Oh, gosh, in, in the whole nation, I mean, population, GDP, uh, median household income, you know, health outcomes, you know, health outcomes, all like that. Arkansas is like a conjoined, conjoined twin. And they're doing stuff up there that's regular, I noticed that their median household income's like, they're not forty, ninety, more than us, fifty, they're like forty-six. They, they starting to jump us, they starting to all put some distance between us and, and them. And they probably doing some stuff we, we, we would do well to look, to look at. Because they don't have any more resources, any more reason to be better than us, but they seem to be doing some things up there that are working for them. And if it'll work in Arkansas, that's your model, we'll work in South Milwaukee.
Well, I think the answer to that is if we win the national championship, we'll be number one in baseball, not team. That balances.
But after the last couple of days, I don't know.
Let's don't go there. Please.
Well, again, so I would just, I would just close by saying, I think, I think all those things are important and I'm certainly hopeful that the long-term, Mississippi's going to turn the, turn the tide and start gaining population, but I'll be frank, I, I don't see that in the, in the short term. I think we're going to continue to be an exporter of talent. Um, and I think that has a very likely indicates that what that's going to do is increase the burden for everybody that chooses to, to work and, and live here. And so I would hope that not only for you, but the other legislators in Jackson would, would be mindful of some of these bigger numbers.
The trajectory seems to, to feed that narrative to an extent, but I think that people are aware, speaking of Jackson, my counterparts, and, and there's an effort, conscious effort in a lot of ways, and just us getting collectively together and then trying to move the ship forward, so to speak. So there's definitely a lot of concern about that and trying to, you know, the, the brain drain talked about daily and trying to do things to keep people and bring people. So it's, it's definitely known.
I do want to add one, one other element to the two percent extension that we'll be asking for. At one point in time, it was ten years and then it went down to like two years and now it's up to three or four years or whatever. If there would be some sort of, five years, ten years, without us having to come back every time you turn around and ask yet again, I don't know where the, what the mindset is on that, but that would be one of those things I would certainly like to explore, is at least having it, say, stay stable at a five-year or a ten-year timeline.
Y'all are two years out, you think?
Four, I think.
No, but we're two years out, but it's a four-year.
Yes, I think we're going to have to be asking next year.
That's not the next, the twenty-three session, when that'll probably be. I will find you an answer to that, I'll understand what's happening there.
It's hard to do long-term planning.
Yes.
You know, bonding and so forth, when you have that term pending out there.
I want to say we had a seven-year one that went through this year of something for us, for a local.
You know, there are some cities, I think.
Well, and one's in perpetuity.
It's like infinite.
Yeah, they got in early.
Asking the question first, I need to find an answer to it, then overcoming the obstacles the second.
All right, thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it. You are welcome to stay, we're going to go over our agenda.
I would like to stay just to, to understand.
Of course, you are, you are more than welcome to stay. Absolutely, you are more than welcome to stay. Um, so what we will do is we will go over our agenda and see what, what meets everyone's criteria for going on consent. And the first item up is going to be our two sets of minutes. Mr. Latimer, have you had a chance to look at those?
Yes, ma'am. Corrections have been implemented and they are ready to go.
Okay, if everyone's comfortable with that, we can put those on, on a consent pattern. And I will be making announcements yet again on the, uh, city hall opening and the reminding people to vote and that sort of thing, so I have that memorialized in the, in the mayor's comments. Does anyone have anything they want to put in the comments for printing or just wait till it's an opportunity on Tuesday? Okay, we will leave it as is. We have one public appearance, this is Mr. Bobby Hampton, who is the owner of Your Friendly Craftsman LLC, and he wants to talk to, he wants to use that ten minutes to talk about contracting of jobs, so, um, he will, he will have that opportunity. We have our second public hearing on establishing the juvenile curfew and truancy law. I sent out an email to y'all yesterday, kind of explaining the thought process to go with that, which is basically, we want to establish, and I've got a meeting with Judge Quarles and Chief Ballard this afternoon on how we structure that process, if we pick someone up at two in the morning, we can't get them with the parents, you know, how do we go about having someone who can take, take charge of that individual until the curfew piece of that is over with? So we're going to set that meeting up and hopefully have a process in place before we take it up.
For a side note, I read something in the newspaper, said that there was a shortage of, I guess, staff in the juvenile detention center and we've just cost share for.
I'll be, I'll be happy to address that here. Let me, I tell you what, let me finish my sentence on this and I'll go into that, because with Senator Williams here, uh, he was in that meeting that we worked on. So essentially, uh, what we'll do is see if there's a process that we can set up that we will memorialize in some sort of procedural way through the juvenile court as well as the police department, and then we'll set it up for the third public hearing and consideration of the first meeting in, or the second meeting in GM. So, okay, yes, ma'am?
Can I jump in before we move on to the detention facility?
Sure.
One of the goals of this curfew was to identify individuals and families that may need to be in.
Helped.
A system other than the court systems and find them the help that, that they need. And because this is a status offense, and I had to Google what a status offense was, because it's a juvenile, it doesn't have to go into the court system. And so that's what y'all are exploring right now, is operationally what you can do with those individuals.
Yes, okay.
And, and also confirming the hours of the curfew.
Uh, yes, we were looking at eleven to five as opposed to, um, as opposed to six, because people, you know, it starts getting daylight, and then Alderman Sistrunk was concerned about it potentially being midnight, and so that was one of the, that was one of the discussion points, but I wanted to coordinate that. Whatever we do, is my opinion, it's a higher importance to, for us to coordinate with the county, so that there's not some sort of, um, I'm out in the county, it's, it's eleven or I'm out and I'm in the city, it's midnight. So whatever we do, I think it's important that we coordinate with the county. Yes, sir?
I ain't never liked midnight from the start. I didn't.
You don't like.
Eleven o'clock, I don't like midnight.
You don't like midnight, okay, so.
I was just waiting to see y'all, y'all, and I, midnight was never something that I wanted them to be out there late, that's, that's still, they're going to be out.
Okay.
Midnight.
Okay, all right, well, Alderman, Alderman Sistrunk is, is much more lenient than I am.
During the week or weekend?
That she was looking at. And don't let me speak for you, but her thought was just have it midnight.
Consistent throughout, consistent throughout the week so that you don't have to stop and go, is it Tuesday or Saturday or whatever? Just have it be consistent. And because the purpose of the curfew is to, to deal with a specific event, auto burglaries and related theft of firearms, um, my thought was, we're not in the job of parenting and setting curfews for children. What we're trying to do is set hours that will allow, um, some containment of that particular crime. And that's why I was, I would prefer something a little later than eleven o'clock, because there are lots of kids who, who are going to be out at eleven o'clock and rightfully so. The parents are okay with them out at eleven. You've got children that are soon going to be in that category. You might get them home at eleven all the time.
Well, you want to talk about that?
My wife is in charge of making those types.
But that is a parent theory issue, and, and I think what we're targeting is something that is specifically related to, um, uh, uh, behavior that we're trying to change. The other thing, um, the other thing is for me, is I don't want it to be open-ended forever. Alderman Walker brought this up earlier, that we needed to have some sort of metrics, and I'm sure y'all have been talking about that too, that will let us know, is this being effective or not being effective? And do we do it, do we continue it or do we?
And, and how long do we do it to make that determination? Because we need to do it at least where the college comes back in, I think, so.
And, and, and I suspect these crimes are seasonal to some extent, so, um, when students come back, I suspect there will be a flurry with new, new students, new cars, that sort of thing. So, so I think there's still a bit more conversation and work to be done.
I would imagine just for sufficient data, in being seasonal, you're going to need to do at least a year. I don't really want to go past that, but I think I want you to cycle to know, you know, with Palistown and education and, you know, obviously there's an uptick in summertime, but you want to catch two of those for the, for the data, so.
Well, and Judge Quarles has said that she thinks a year, but, you know, at the very minimal, we will revisit it, based on the ordinance alone, we will be revisiting the numbers and how the process has been going over a regular period of time. Did you have something?
I'm supportive of whatever, whatever come up, I'm supportive because, you know, you get to think about, should have finished Starkville on the movers, and the movers don't turn out to two L. And so, you know, I'm supportive of whatever we put on the table.
Okay, all right, well, I do, again, want to make sure the chief gets with the sheriff so that we can make that one work together, so. Uh, and to, to go to the juvenile, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, real quick on the drafting, the draft hadn't changed from the first public hearing to this public hearing, because you guys are working on the hourage and Judge Quarles juvenile authority system that's going to be implemented, and so I didn't want y'all to expect any changes in the draft from the first hearing to this hearing. Then we'll take after this hearing and, and load it all up and come back with a final draft for the third hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. So let me address your, the juvenile. I'll, in the, in an effort to see what needed to be done from a juvenile detention, um, perspective, the seven counties of the PDD came together at PDD and we all sat down and talked about, started to talk about the need, yes or no, the need and the willingness to, to support a juvenile detention facility, which was going to be, you know, thirty, forty million bucks. And so, City of Starkville's not going to do it by ourselves, Acton Hall County's not going to do it by ourselves. It would take a group like that. And about five minutes into the discussion, which I was very grateful that Senator Williams attended, the Lowndes County Juvenile Justice Court, juvenile judge said, well, we've got twenty-two beds. And I went, whoa, okay, so how many, why is it you, you know, because I had understood that it only have six. And I thought it was six, but it's not, it's twenty-two. But they can't staff it except to make, to, to, um, handle six kids. And so I asked her what the issue was, and basically it is a staffing issue, which is what Lee County had had a problem with up in Tupelo. So to flesh it out a little bit further, you know, if we all participated, for example, I went back and I asked Judge Quarles, how many beds does Acton Hall County need? And she said roughly four. And since she works in Clay County, I said, how many beds does Clay County need? She said probably four. And the Winston County judge said, we probably need two to three. So you start adding those up and you get, you don't get so many that the twenty-two wouldn't work. The problem is that, you know, how do we structure it? Right now, if we have bed, we, we purchase beds at Acton Hall County for the adults, ten per year, is that right, chief? Okay. So if we could conceivably purchase four, and I say purchase cautiously, I mean, you know, reserve four, we will pay for four beds, use them or not, we'll pay for four beds in Lowndes County, which will help support their effort. If, and, and we could split that with Acton Hall County, because it's a fifty-fifty kind of deal right now, because there are no numbers, it's a, it's anecdotal information. And each one of those counties could say that. The only fly in the ointment, which I find fascinating and which I had asked Senator Williams to look into, was the fact that this one, oh, there are two units, each with an eleven. This unit's designated for women and this unit's designated for men. If they have even one female, that entire unit of eleven is no longer serviceable. You can't use it, because it's all got to be a woman. So one of the things I think we might do is figure out if there's a legislative way to, to change that so that all of that, it can be configured so that all of that is available for men, in which case we could find another accommodation for the one woman. And I, and again, Judge Quarles being my source, I said, you know, over the last eight years that you've been doing juvenile justice, uh, work in Clay County and now in Acton Hall, how many women have you put in juvenile detention? And she said one. So, you know, clearly there's a, there's an offset there that it doesn't make any sense for us to lose that kind of capability for the one over a period of eight years.
That's one.
Yeah, and so how do we do that? And so that's what Senator Williams is going to help us with, but I think we have a path forward now that's much more doable for us. So do we purchase beds from Lowndes County in conjunction with Acton Hall County? The city has never put that in our budget, but that is a, that to me is something that is appropriate for us to put in our budget. We split it with Acton Hall County and it, my calculation, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day, three sixty-five for two beds, comes out to be about sixty thousand a year, so.
And we, we've not done that with juveniles, but we do have bed renovation policies.
Yes, yes, but we've never done that with juveniles. So that would be my proposal, but that, we're going to look at that as we move forward, but I've got to get more data.
Cheaper solution.
Absolutely, and it, and it's fair. I mean, if we're putting, you know, we're putting those kids into the system as a city, then we need to share. And so to me, that's a reasonable path forward, we've just got to get the, the full amount of information available from, uh, the Lowndes County folks and see if we can move that forward in a positive way. But I was very, uh, heartened by the fact that they had beds that were just not being used because they were understaffed and how do we help make that better? Yes, sir?
Can you say there's a female male housing issue in this eleven and eleven? Can it not be, are you saying from logistically, like the way that the building's set up? Or is it a law?
Apparently it's both. The building, you've got a building set up here and a building set up here, and this is how it was described, correct me if I'm wrong, eleven and eleven. One's designed for women, one's designed for men. So they have been using it for both, except if they have a female, it kicks that entire one out, which throws a real kink in it and how you can plan for it.
And if you could find housing for a female unit within the seven county, I mean, you know, for three beds for females, and you could utilize all twenty-two spaces for males, or I was wondering, I haven't been, so I don't know if you could break off four beds for females, you know, within that unit?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a building issue as opposed to a bed issue, because if you could segment it off, but, but once you do that, there's so much that's involved, you've got to have an educator, you've got to have a nurse, you've got to have resources in that facility, in those facilities, that you don't necessarily have to see down in the, the normal corrections facility, because, because of the education, a teacher is required. So you got, then you'd have to have two teachers, because they can't, they can't mingle together at all.
Well, keep it up, it sounds like that's the answer. I mean, can.
I was pretty excited that we didn't have to look at a forty million dollar, potential forty million dollars.
And operations.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and then operations, exactly. So anyway, I was, that, that's, that's the story and it is not in a nutshell, that's the long story, so.
Good news.
Okay, thank you, thank you, yes. Okay, so anyway, well, the other one is a public hearing on a consideration of a variance for proposed restaurant, that's Jack's on Lewisville Street. So they're looking at the parking area that is in front of Dirtcheat.
And real quick, obviously it's a public hearing, but city planner, what is the variance request?
The variance request is for exceed maximum building setback and to have parking in front of the building, parking setbacks also. And it's all generated based on where the lot is located, where the access coming from the light, so.
And the plan is that's going to be in the northeast corner of the parking lot? Is that the outpark?
Currently, it has been a separate lot for a long time, even though it is used as a parking for jobs.
Do you see any, at this point, any serious concerns about granting that variance?
We've worked a lot of concerns through DRC, I think we've gotten a good response.
Thanks, sir.
I think the biggest concern would be access.
Access, old rule of signalizing exception on Lewisville.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we will be having a public hearing on that and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals approved it?
Yeah, unanimously.
Unanimously? Okay, all right, thank you. Next item is the proclamation of a local emergency and we're gonna do that this time and we're gonna look at doing it differently next time around. We may not have to do it at all, or we may do it with some language that says we're following the state law and that way, we can take it off of our to-do list on a monthly basis.
And still get the reimbursements?
Well, exactly, that's, we wanna research that, but it appears that that's a possibility. But for this time, we'll put that one in. So consent if everyone's comfortable with that again. Okay. Then we have, Daniel, you wanna help us? We've got a final plat for two lots on Stark Road and Hollywood Boulevard.
Yes, this is just kinda cleaning up the currently plotted lots with the restaurants or strata of the line, just to clean it up to allow for another lot to develop in the future.
Okay, any, any pushback on that from P&amp;Z? Was it unanimous?
This is the minor submissions, just went through DRC, they've worked through all their issues and now they're ready to go forward for all of them.
Everyone comfortable with consent?
Consent.
Okay. The next item is Mississippi Archives and History. This has got an actual match of seventy-five hundred dollars. We have done an in-kind match in the past, but unfortunately, that will not be the case this time. We've not budgeted for this particular item, but it is, it is a survey of civil rights locations in the City of Starkville. So Alderman Sistrunk said she believes she can find some seventy-five hundred dollars somewhere that we can, we can adjust our budget.
GoFundMe a kid.
That we can do that. So if we can get this grant, it's a total for fifteen thousand dollars. So if everyone's comfortable with that, putting on that consent?
Consent.
Okay, thank you. Engineering is acceptance of a low quote. This is, I had a conversation with Amy Bishop, who is with the Starkville Housing Authority, they have some CARES money left over. And so there are a couple of things that they're willing to do with that CARES money. One of them was the two radar speed control signs for Wood Street. They have traffic that goes across from McDowell. We, she wanted us to come to the board meeting next time around, did, you got that email? Okay, anyway, across McDowell, so to address that with their board, as well as security cameras. So they're looking at spending their camera, their CARES money on additional security cameras in the Pecan Acres and in, what's the one called that's, that's up off of Long Street? Has it got a different name?
Long Street.
Okay, Long Street, well, anyway, whatever it is.
The housing authority.
Yes, the housing authority in general, but yes.
Perk and Dry, after Perk and Dry.
Yes, yes. So anyway, they're looking at doing that, but that's what this was as it relates to the low quote for those traffic signals. And I am, I'm hopeful that there won't be any issue from the Starkville Housing Authority, but if there is, we have other locations that we can use them in the city. So Edward and I have had that conversation, so, but I expect them to be supportive of it. Yes, ma'am?
This is a clarification, not related to this, but when we had the Rookwill Garden discussion the other night, we probably referred to it as section eight property and, or there's been some discussion in the community that it is section eight property. It is not, it's, it is not. So I just wanted everybody to be aware that it is not section eight property. And that's why section eight people have not gone in and inspected those properties through years.
Okay, but voucher is not the same thing?
It's not a voucher, it's not a voucher program.
Okay, well, I'm educated.
And I'm trying to find out, actually, Mr. Robert Hurd at the Public Housing Authority is trying to help me find out what federal program this is funded through. Maybe USDA, he's, he's not sure.
As opposed to HUD?
As opposed to HUD.
Okay.
So he's following up.
I do know that they, they do take vouchers, and so whatever that program is, we do need to do, so, okay, thank you for that. Yes, sir?
That's what our conversation gonna be about, because I had gotten in contact with our city councilman, you know, and that's what our conversation gonna be about. If it was section eight, how can we as a board sit and let them issue federal funds like that? That's what I was concerned about. But you, you should know that.
We're chasing, well, we're chasing now which federal funds are being funded.
Yeah, 'cause there's still federal funds.
There's still federal money. They wanna, they wanna know about the condition of what, of living conditions, stuff they put money, I'm sure they will.
That's what I was concerned about, are we just gonna allow them to do that with funds that we operate, we run in the city of, with federal funds? I'm hoping that it's something that we can do to report this to the federal government.
Once we find the right bodies.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That's what I talked to Chris Lattin about, turnabout.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And they'll put all of them on notice and, wait a minute, if you, if you're doing this and you got people living on this condition, this is what's gonna happen to you.
Yes, yeah, okay, excellent.
Just gonna say, real quick, I'm certainly very much in support of the radar control speed signs. And I will say, and this is for the chief and the city engineer, I guess it's probably been, I don't know, several weeks ago now, maybe a month, I was sitting at the intersection of South Montgomery and Gillespie, looking to the west, where the new one had been installed. And it may have changed since then, but sitting at that intersection, you could see three speed limit signs, including the new one. So if there's anybody speeding on that street right now, they've got no qualms with receiving a ticket. And so I'm hopeful, if they haven't already been, that they're gonna begin the removal of some of those signs that might not be useful anymore. But from there, you could see three, three signs that said what the speed limit is. So hopefully, lots of tickets are gonna get written right there if you're not obeying the speed limit law.
Well, and I'm always excited about being able to remove eye clutter, so.
Well, and so I would say, with the, that's one of the things, I think they're gonna be very effective, they're certainly very large. And so the opportunity, if we can consolidate other signage that's not, that's doing the same thing, I would say, yeah, I'd be looking for that in the locations where we're putting in these new signs.
Absolutely.
I think it needs to be noted also that part of the issue with speeding across town on these streets has been created with, it's a good thing, but the way Highway twelve was reconfigured and reconstructed, those medias and stuff, a lot of people using Gillespie, Wood Street, places like that, get east-west across Starve, and so that's increased traffic. And a lot of them wanna drive about the same speed they drive out there on Highway twelve, and you can't do that on Wood Street, you know, so to the extent that, I think these things are needed.
Yeah, I, I like them very, very much, but I will be honest with you, as I recall, when Edward did his study of Gillespie, that, that was actually not the case.
To a traffic count?
Yeah, traffic count and the speed count was.
Well, it went down.
Well, they were, it hadn't, it wasn't like it had spiked up or anything, so. And Wood Street, certainly, but Wood Street fortunately, we also put crosswalk where those radar signs are gonna go, because she has people going from McDowell over to the other side, so it's an opportunity for those folks to have some.
And there again, I would caution that if people, if by putting crosswalks in, that's construed to mean I can walk out in that road without, I mean, our campus, they do it, I mean, and over there, it's understood that you stop, 'cause they're gonna walk out in front of you. But I was somebody thinking, 'cause this crosswalk is safe, we can walk out, his cars will stop me, I don't know. Sometimes those things are good, sometimes they, sometimes they can not be good.
Mid-block, Edward?
Mid-block.
The what?
Well, they're doing it, they're doing it now. And so the goal is to try to alert people that this is where people are, pedestrians are crossing. So let's make it as safe as we possibly can. If you've got those two speed radar signs flanking on either side, and then you've got a crosswalk and a, you know, pointing here, then hopefully, that will get everybody's attention. But that was, that's the goal. So anyway, we will try to see about doing that. Did we get consent on the, on the quote for the radar signs? Okay, thank you. Claims docket, we'll move to the fire department. That will be traveling to participate in, this is a, what was it, a, it's a, lost my language. Yes, Homeland Security, thank you. This is a Homeland Security issue, so consent, thank you very much. Okay, and then Nav is not here to claim his, his nine items on the agenda, but we are, we are, for the most part, we are putting in replacements for folks that have left us and hiring to fill in our departments. So this is going to be Mr. Mobley and Khadija Poe as maintenance workers in the street department. Edward, anything about that in particular?
These are just filling vacant positions.
Okay.
Consent.
Consent, thank you. Grounds maintenance for the airport department, we have lost someone there, so that's a, that's a fill-in as well, consent for that one?
Consent being called.
Okay, Parks and Rec maintenance workers, consent on that one?
Consent.
He's not here today.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, sorry, Lisa, you are here, aren't you? My, my brain didn't register. Okay, thank you. And then we also have the lifeguards, consent for our lifeguards for the Parks and Rec. An entry-level police officer will fill us in, that'll be great. And then procurement manager for Starkville Utilities, Jacob, anything in particular about that one? I saw you over here.
No, I'm not, just for questions.
Okay, thank you, consent for that? Okay, thank you. Inventory control tech in Starkville Utilities, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we have a memorandum of understanding for a worksite agreement with Octobal Schools District, and that is, Chris, have you looked at this one?
Yeah, I vetted it legally, and that's an agreement we've entered into in years past to allow those kids to work under our tutelage and gain some work-life skills and be covered under our workers' comp. So it's the same process that we've done in previous years.
Yes, but you're, you've looked at it and it's good to go? So this would be through Emerson Family School District, so, all right, but the school district, Emerson Family School, so.
It is a little different this time that we have to hire the students. There will be city employees instead of just plus two. It is a little different.
Okay, all right. So this next one needs a little discussion and I'll, I'll be as brief as I can. Essentially, what we've looked at is we've got a number of projects over the next three, two to three years for the Parks and Rec, as well as for the city in its entirety, as we're continuing to grow and need engineering. So this is intended as a potential temporary job that will save us money rather than having, what's the percentage, Edward, the engineering percentage, ten, five percent?
Anywhere from eight to five and a half percent, depending on if it's design or construction.
Okay, so essentially, we ran the numbers on an engineering, the engineering service that Neil Schaefer or whoever provides for us, and over a period of two to three years, that position, or that cost will be paid for through this position, and it would be an in-house position that we could then use for other things in the city. So that's the thought process that goes, that goes with this. And Alderman Sistrunk, we had chatted about that briefly in the budget session, and beyond that, we haven't had that discussion, so this is our opportunity for that. If, if anyone has any thoughts or ideas about it, engineering tends to be, okay, I'm sorry, I saw you, but engineering tends to be one of those things that they get like up to here, particularly with the bill grant and stormwater management and all those, those calculations and the things that engineering is doing for us now. So this is just an opportunity for us to make sure that we are keeping it, keeping our projects, the oversight of our projects in-house, so that we know exactly what we're doing and we're not relying on an outside source to do it, and another way to, to support that cost. So that's what, that's the, that's the goal. Alderman Sistrunk?
And the question for me is always, where does the money come from to fund this? And hopefully, it will come from cost avoidance in contracts, as we're entering into contracts throughout the year. For instance, the Parks and Rec parking lot contract, there's probably about fifty thousand dollars of engineering fees that are associated with that particular contract. So that would certainly cover that, that project, this person for that project. Beyond that, if, if it is about to be budget cycled, and so we will look at general funds as an opportunity to restructure some of our construction project estimates and, and shift that cost to cover this temporary position, so.
Yes, sir?
Just a couple of clarifications, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with this going on consent. I certainly think we need to look through it a little more. I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of this moving forward. So reading just the, this, it says project manager, and from what I just heard Alderman Sistrunk say, that this may be, so Edward, is in your mind, is this going to be for designing the parking lots and doing those types of things, in-house design, or is it going to be to manage the construction and overseeing the construction piece of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So Brandon and I, along with the HR director, put together, Brandon has a list of capital projects that he wants to achieve over the next two to three years. I think that's what outlined in the packet. What we did is some of those projects have already been designed. And in those situations, the idea was this person would be over all the contracts and all of, overall the construction, to making sure that it's built to a high-quality standard. On some of the projects that haven't been designed yet, some of those are outlined in there. There is a potential, if we find the right person, that design could be incorporated into some of those as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly in support of that, and I would, I would hope that both with through the city engineering department and the parks and city planning, all of those, looking at, I think there's probably some threshold in terms of design, not just capability, but size of project, whether that's dollar amount or size of project. I think it's gonna have a, I think the city just needs to be careful of what it is that we, that we take on in terms of internal design, because that's gonna take a tremendous amount of time and effort, and it, really, the bigger cost saving might be that construction management base, management piece based on that. So I'm certainly supportive, I'd like, I'm gonna wait and look at the documents before, I'm willing to go with consent and see how in fact we are going to budget that and have that paid for, but I can certainly see that happening. The other question I have is, where are we gonna house them? Where's this, where's this person gonna, where are they gonna be?
That's a good question. We're talking about that right now as we speak.
We've got, you know, we've still got an office here that hasn't been filled yet, so we're, we're doing, we're looking at shuffling and how we shuffle.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't expect it to go on consent either, so. All right, under IT, this is a purchase of antivirus and patch management software, which Matt, you wanna, you wanna share real quickly that this is a swap of a different, just a different vendor?
Yeah, we're just swapping vendors here.
Okay, same, same deal, but just a different vendor is needed, so consent for that one? Okay, and under Parks, this is our video security system, we're gonna go out bid for it. We had hoped, actually, probably ought to recuse yourself. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Security Solutions has a, has a package that they put together for us, but because they were the only ones that, from a proposal standpoint, came forward, we have to have two, two proposals in order to go forward with it. So in this case, we can go forward with a bid package, and that way, if we only get one bid, then, you know, we don't have any issues of having the proposal thing, so that's what this is about.
Where all these go? Exterior, Sportsplex, interior? Well, where are all the locations at?
There are, well, there, the Sportsplex, the Annex, Travis Outlaw Center, McKee, all the places, we've got some license plate readers, there's some details of that. Matt, do you have all those on the top of your head? Joel did at one point in time. Okay, well, anyway, there are license plate readers, so there's multiple, multiple resources, and it comes just under fifty thousand, it was like forty-seven thousand or somewhere in there that we were asking for proposals for.
How does the FBR work? I mean, is that constantly, is it put in the database every day, or just pull it when you have a violent crime or a shooting in a park? I mean, how would that affect the city? What would they do?
Okay, so I've got two people here, experts in that, so we're gonna go to the chief and then we'll go to the man whose business it is and let him help us out. Chief?
Sure, from our standpoint, the FBR is only used when they have a crime, and the most fearful crimes that are child abduction, because you're looking at forty-five hours. So to be able to get that information immediately, get on it, and obviously, parks, some of the units just the other day, were, you know, they unfortunately attract that type of personnel. So the FBR allows us to quickly move on. Outside of that, as you know, Alderman, we're, we're so slammed, you know, that is something that if we get a call on it, we'll pull the information, we'll go with it. But other than that, it just goes into a data, just like our costume system currently is, if we have a call, we need, we'll track it, other than that, it just goes into.
Let me say, if you're looking for a gray truck, then immediately, you can just pull all the gray trucks that are in McKee Park at that moment, and then you pretty much narrowed it down to that vehicle?
That would be dependent upon the software system, but yes, sir, if you've got, let's say, a gray truck and you can, depending on your software, you can do an old-school visual, but the FBR should be able to pull up, you would want with a gray, silver, anything along the lines, make sure you've got it all, but cuts the process down versus trying to go through county records, six or seven, seven county records, make sure you're getting everything. That takes hours and you don't have hours in those time frames.
Thank you. So Senator, do you have anything you have to add to that as an expert in the security business?
Just to concur what he said, the video analytics are constantly improving and the speed of retain, of getting that information off a lot of data just becomes very, very, you can do it a lot quicker than you used to. Even on point of video analytics, of facial recognition, things will help, and I mean, it just sets things, mashes together, it improves itself. And as the footprint expands throughout the city, it, I mean, the holistic approach, that's just tremendous, what you can do with this technology.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Consent there.
Consent for that? Okay, thank you. And then we have the contract for the Travis Outlaw Center usage with Skate Odyssey, that is not unlike other contracts we've had for the use of Travis Outlaw, so consent for that one? Authorization to purchase StartSmart equipment is a sole source item, and this is for, this is for kids' activities throughout the, throughout the parks in multiple ways, so consent there? Consent. Okay. And under police, we have a justice assistance grant, consent for that one? Bulletproof vests on those for one, A and B both. And then we have Officer Ledlow attending a, this is for motorcycles. Down in DeIverville, consent for that. And then an agreement with the Starkville Warehouse, did we not pull that?
We, Mayor, we did pull it.
Okay.
That was expressed to Council of the Land.
Okay, all right, we pulled it.
Yeah, we, they did not get recognized.
Okay, all right. Well, and we have an alternative option that's gonna cost us nothing, right? We're gonna use the airport, so. Under sanitation, purchasing a new cab litter for, oh, what is this, lease finance? No, this is the mower. We had a tractor that we had approved and they, their delivery date kept getting pushed further and further back, so this is an alternative tractor for us. Consent there? And then we go to utilities, and we're almost done. The bid for power circuit breakers for, from Siemens, consent for our primary substation, okay? Vacuum truck sales and service for the CCTV camera repairs, we need that camera, so consent there? Lowest quote from the electric motor and sales for clarifier pump, we need that one as well. Consent there? And then lowest and best quote for Ferguson Waterworks for PVC pipe?
Consent.
Yay, we'll get that replaced, that's your award, Alderman Vaughn. And then ARC project change order for the trim cane lift station.
Consent.
Consent there? All right, and we have nothing for executive session, and that takes us to the end of our agenda that stands right now. So if there's anything else, anyone else, remember to vote absentee if you need to, it'll be this Saturday from eight to noon, and then Monday is a holiday, Memorial Day. I hope everyone has a, has a lovely time. We will have a Memorial Day service on the courthouse steps on Monday morning, and then we will have our board meeting on Tuesday night.
What time is Monday, Monday?
I believe it's eleven o'clock. I need to look at that, 'cause I'm speaking at it, so I'm, let me see here for sure. Yes, I've got eleven o'clock, so. And it's always a nice event, so thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.